This time we'll call the meeting to order. And this is actually a special meeting because the members of the court have to be out of town. And we are going to do the meeting a little bit early so everybody can get on the road. And we'll get a little bit of feedback. Let's see, Jimmy, it's getting a bit of feedback. So we'll call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. William Spears to say the invocation for us.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you, Lord, seeking your guidance for the decisions made here today, Lord, that they would be in your will and for the betterment of this county. We also ask your blessing on the families, Lord, that have lost loved ones in the storms that are south of us here. And we ask all these things in the sweet name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Here.
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Larry McGoy if he'd say the Pledge of Allegiance, or lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
First item on the agenda is approval of a contract with Kevin Prater for services of a sound system and booking of entertainment for Hilly Days 2020 and authorization to issue a check in the amount of $2,600. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booth. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is approval to execute the challenge partnership agreement with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a cooperative cleanup project at Fishtrap Lake, with the county utilizing their 2020 illegal opened-up cleanup grant funds for the Levisza Fork of Fishtrap Lake. And I'd like to ask Ms. O'Quinn, who is the new superintendent at Fishtrap, and Brett and Larry, if you'd like to come up and join Ms. Hall at the front table. Welcome back. Ms. O'Quinn, congratulations on the appointment as superintendent. Before we begin, just for the purpose of the record, let's start over here to my left. And if everybody would just introduce themselves for the purpose of the record for the clerk of the court.
I'm Larry McGoy, Ranger there at Fishtrap Lake.
Brett Sauer, yours, natural resource specialist, Fishtrap Lake.
And I'm Audrey O'Quinn, and I'm the resource manager at Fishtrap Lake.
Well, again, welcome. And this is an agreement that we had also executed last year where we committed funds from the illegal opened-up cleanup, and the corps committed additional resources. I think it was about $240,000 last year. Is that correct? And Sharon, why don't you tell us the dollar amounts this year that we're looking at for the Fishtrap cleanup?
Okay, for the Fishtrap cleanup, it's $59,595. Last year, we received $126,000. This year, you know, a whole lot less, but we're just thankful to be able to go back again.
And Ms. O'Quinn, do you think that we're going to be able to get the lake back? And I know we had a lot of debris and trash come in with the most recent flooding. Do you think that this will help us get the lake back to the condition it was in last summer?
Oh, absolutely. We're well on our way now. We've spent, it's been three weeks since the flood, and we've removed over 2,500 cubic yards of combustibles at this point, and about 280 cubic yards of trash, and that's not including the tires. And with a three-week time period, with your resources and ours working together in this partnership agreement, I would say that that's probably a record for this lake.
Yeah, I was a little bit off on the numbers. I couldn't remember exactly how much it was last year. I know it was a little bit more than what we're going to be able to allocate this year. Hopefully, if we do this every year, we're going to be able to keep the lake to where it has some economic development potential. One of the things I would like to do, if you could, is to set up a meeting with whoever the appropriate person at the court would be to talk about what we can do. And there's been talk, even back when I was in the state senate, we had a meeting with Division of Water, with Mr. Holbrook was there, about what we could potentially do to try to keep some of the material up on the upper end of the lake to where it wouldn't all end up down at the dam.
Right.
And I know that some lakes in other places have had, you know, some type of system put installed where it would help capture that trash. But really, there's another issue, and I think Brett and I had this conversation last week, that a lot of this stuff is coming in from Virginia. And back when I served in the senate, I wrote Governor Northam a letter. It seems like he's been more interested in taking guns from law-abiding citizens and keeping their garbage out of our state. And, you know, that's really, in my opinion, a displaced priority. But, you know, there's been a long history of problems with garbage and, you know, naturally occurring debris coming in from Virginia. And our tax dollars are having to go to clean up their problem. Whilst too many years ago, there was 200 or 300 million gallons, I can't remember the exact number, millions of gallons of raw sewage that leaked out of the system in Grundy and ends up in Kentucky. And that's just not fair to the people here. It was like a week or two weeks before the officials in Grundy even let us know that that had taken place. Fortunately, we didn't have a fish kill or any other significant environmental impact from it. But nevertheless, when you have something like that take place, I would just like to see if we could start some dialogue.
Sure.
I've been working on this for years. I'm frustrated that we're still having to deal with this. But I am hopeful and optimistic that we can keep the lake cleaned up with continued cooperation with the court. And I really appreciate you all, what you've done. You've got some big shoes to fill with Mr. Holbrook retiring. I worked with Rodney for many years. And so with that being said, would you all like to add anything on this, or any comments?
We're just very appreciative for all that you guys have done, and I think that this has been a great partnership effort and a great example of teamwork. We have a great group of individuals at Fishtrap Lake, and the employees there are very trained and talented, but they've only been held back by the resources that they've had. And you guys were able to help provide some of that for them. And, you know, your help that you've pitched in, it's been tremendously appreciated, and I think the results speak for themselves.
Well, I can say this. You know, I grew up here. I think you're from Virginia, correct?
That's correct.
Brett's from here. I grew up with Larry. And, you know, it's always a running joke, "Trash trap, trash trap." But I can tell you that Jason Tackett, Ronnie Robertson, Brian Booth, and myself, as long as this court's here, we're going to do everything we can to change that. It's not going to be called Trash Trap. It's going to be kept as clean as we can possibly keep it, and we're going to commit the resources. We want to thank our jailer, Brian Morris, because he worked really hard to provide inmate labor.
Right.
The Pike County Pride, Betty Brown, Marie Childers, that organization. We've had a lot of volunteers that worked to keep the lake or to clean the lake up. And we're going to continue to do our part, making sure that you've got the resources. As long as we continue to get the illegal opened-up grant cleanup money, we're going to continue to try to make sure that we're going to take care of Fishtrap.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I look forward to working with you in the future on this.
And we also, Commissioner Robertson may want to mention the trail system. I know that there's been some discussion about ATV trails potentially around Fishtrap.
I think we're going to, at the next court meeting, we'll make an announcement on that judge. It's running pretty smooth right now, so we're waiting for the one leasing to sign, and then we'll go after it.
So with that being said, is there a motion to approve the 2020 challenge partnership agreement with U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a cooperative cleanup project at Fishtrap Lake, with county utilizing their 2020 illegal open dump cleanup grant funds for the Levisza Fork of Fishtrap, and authorization for the judge executive to execute all necessary documents?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Booth. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is, thank you all very much. You're welcome to hang around.
Judge, I wanted to mention that the total that we did receive this year was 224,000 out of 955,000 across the state. Pike County received almost 25% of all the funding, and that they're doing a fantastic job of cleaning up.
Well, we appreciate your hard work on this. And I knew it had 224,000.
Yeah, we received a total of 224,000, but we had 14 dumps this year. I mean, we've been really on it.
Well, you know, the sad part of it is this. We're having to take tax dollars to clean up illegal dumps. And another thing that this court has done is since we came in office, there was no solid waste enforcement officer. And when you have people out here that don't care enough about this county, or the future of this county, that they'll go out and dump garbage in creeks and streams and every wide spot they can, you know, those are the kind of people I wish would leave here. Because if you don't care enough about the community where you're living and working and raising your family that you would do something like that, when all they've got to do is put it beside the road and air solid waste system, even if they're not paying a garbage bill, we pick it up. But you've got some people that just don't care. And we've charged about 250 of them, and as long as I'm judge and this court's here, we're going to continue charging them. We are working with Senator Philip Wheeler right now to get legislation passed that would increase the penalty for illegal dumping and littering, in that there would be a fee between $250 and $500, in addition to the criminal penalties that would come back to the counties and help us with these illegal dump cleanups. I mean, there's no reason the county should have to be using taxpayer money, we're already stretched thin, to clean up illegal dumps. And it's just something I have no tolerance for. And if the people out there listen to this, and you're caught doing it, you know, I think at some point, we really are going to have to talk to our county attorney about seeking jail time for some of these people. Because really, if you're doing this, you need to go to jail. You know, a fine and probation is not enough. They need to be put in jail. We've got to clean Eastern Kentucky up, to be able to bring new jobs here, to have a hope for economic development. And, you know, we're getting ready to spend $5 million with the infrastructure at the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. And, you know, until we clean our environment up and we eliminate some of these things, it's going to be hard to bring company in here. But we're going to continue to work at it. We're going to continue working with you, Ms. O'Quinn, Brett, Larry. Good seeing you all. We appreciate all you're doing. And whatever we can do to help the court, let us know.
Thank you.
Next item is approval of appointment to the Pikeville-Corn City-Pike County Joint Planning Commission. And I have nominated Mr. Tim Campoy PE and Mr. Randall Stewart, professional land surveyor. We have copies of their. And just so people will know, the commission is nine members, three appointed by the mayor of Pikeville, three by Elkhorn City, three by the judge executive. I'm not sure if it requires fiscal court approval or not under this. It says that they're appointed by the judge executive, but we'll go ahead and act on that. I'm not sure if it requires. Most of you know Mr. Campoy, is that correct? He is a 1986 graduate of the University of Kentucky with a degree in mining engineering. He's licensed in Kentucky, West Virginia, and Tennessee. And he works as owner-president of environmental design consultants for the past 24 years. He is working on the Wolf Pit Industrial Site. And Mr. Randall Stewart is a graduate of, he's from Long Fork at Virgy. He owns ARCO Land Surveying since 1989. He is a licensed professional land surveyor and attended the University of Kentucky and graduated from Pikeville College. And I wanted to make sure that when we put people on this board, that there are going to be people who are qualified. And we also have on here Mr. Jimmy Kaiser as our other appointment. Jimmy, in the past, did the court act on that, or was it just done by the judge?
The judge, Jimmy.
Okay. I don't think that this requires. Kevin, can you check that statute real quick? And I don't know that this requires court approval, but, you know, this court has worked well together, and I'll just ask, even if it doesn't require court approval, is there any objection to either of these individuals being placed on the joint plan?
No.
Just so food for thought, when I started practicing law 26 years ago, Bill Hickman, who I worked with at the time and still do, explained to me that if you subdivide a piece of property in a county with a joint planning commission, like we have, people would go out and, you know, just measure off a piece of property to deed to a child, that that deed is void, this is just a little trivia, that deed is void unless there is a plat prepared and approved by the planning commission. Plat prepared by a surveyor and approved by the planning commission. So it is an important group, it has a very important function, and I just wanted to make sure that we're putting people on there that are qualified. So Kevin, do you find that yet? I'll just stand at ease for one second. What is that statute, KRS? You know, just to be on the safe side, I don't see that it's required. It basically just says that the county judge executive may appoint a member to a planning It says a planning commission. I don't know how this was organized, but just to be on the safe side, is there a motion to confirm Tim Campoy and Randall Stewart? We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Seeing no other questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Fann, you have anything, sir? Uh, Mr. Little, you have anything? All right, we have before us approval of the Pike County Commissioners Recommended Road Maintenance List. Have the members had an opportunity to review it? Or are there any modifications, or amendments, or additions? Is there a motion to approve the Pike County Commissioners Recommended Road Maintenance? We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Tackett. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Mr. Stacy Trezor's business.
I just have two small items, Judge. The first one would be authorized checks for lodging, registration, and expenses for any employee who needs to attend the Kentucky DLG 2020 CDBG program guidelines training, March 26th at the CAECO Training Room in Frankfurt.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize? A motion by Commissioner Booth? Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Robertson? Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Last thing I have is to authorize a check in the amount of $62,500 to Jigsaw Enterprise for Phase II broadband feasibility study.
All right, and this money we'll get back, is that correct?
We had to pay it upfront, but we get it back.
Okay. Before, did you ever get a list for us about other monies that were out there, grant monies, whether it's FEMA?
I've almost got it finished, Judge, and I've actually got about half of that money back. We're actually going to start closing out two of the other grants tomorrow, but...
How much other money before the end of the fiscal year do you think we'll be getting? Because right now, the only money that we're going to really have coming in is whatever solid waste bills that we receive in the fourth quarter, coal, mineral, and occupational net profit.
Right.
So, and we'll be still four months in the fiscal year, and that's the only revenue we've really got. Is that the only major revenue we've got coming?
Uh, one more quarter of solid waste billing.
That's what I'm saying, whatever solid waste.
Right.
But...
That's it, yeah.
But the thing is about the, as far as the big tax revenue, occupational net profit, coal, mineral.
That's it.
Okay. And still four months of payroll and bills, roughly.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to authorize a check for Jigsaw Enterprises on the Phase II broadband feasibility study in the amount of $62,500?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
What's that? Second by Commissioner Tackett. Is any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We have a short need for executive session, and if we need to take action on pending litigation, since we didn't put it on here to vote on that, but we can address it in executive session, can you still address it here today? Or would that be something we would have to?
It would have to be listed somewhere.
Okay. So, we can do it at the next regular meeting then. All right. Mr. Keane, please read the appropriate Kentucky revised statutes prior to entry into executive session.
We need a motion to vote, KRS 61810 subsection C and F, to discuss, do we have any personnel matters tonight? Specific personnel matters and pending litigation.
All right, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
A motion, but Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Court will stand at ease for purpose of executive session, and will return upon call of chair. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Jimmy, would you go find our personnel manager, please, and tell them I'd like to get this done as quickly as possible? It would be, there's only one personnel matter on the agenda today, and that would be my motion to terminate Mr. Austin Blankenship as a solid waste driver. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, a second. We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We now have the, we have no one signed up for public comment. Pike County Department Supervisors, I'm just going to go through. Mr. Fann, do you have anything? Ms. Thacker? Ms. Goff? Ms. Hall? We do have City Commissioner Bob Shirtless back here. Bob, welcome. Good to have you. Ms. Vanover, anything? Ms. Thacker, anything? Mr. Ralph, you want to give us just a brief update on the Suddenlink matter?
Of course, as everyone probably knows by now, we had a meeting, what was the day?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of February with Suddenlink.
Vince, you might want to speak up.
It's... Is it not picking me up?
No.
Okay. Now, I'm pretty sure you can hear me.
I got you now.
(laughing) We had the meeting with Suddenlink, and we kind of told them where we stood with I have had, still getting complaints every day, which I am sending through. We have Mrs. Aine, who is the attorney, we've gotten, we've spoken with her. I don't know how much she wants to talk about that, but...
I'll give a brief update on that, just...
I think that they have, we have finally convinced them that we are serious. And I know for a fact that they, some of the things that we had discussed, you and I, about them billing customers when they shouldn't have been billed, they have ceased doing that, is what I have been told. I'm kind of waiting to hear from customers on that. But that's about where we're staying.
Well, I think we're in the process of scheduling a meeting with Linda Aine, who is the attorney that specializes in franchise agreements. And basically, we've got two choices to make. We can either terminate the franchise agreement and give them the proper notice. The question about that is if we terminate the franchise agreement, there's no guarantee that someone else will come in to provide the service.
That's correct.
On the other hand, that agreement is, has been in a month-to-month basis, I guess, for some time, or...
The original agreement actually expired in 2014. It was a 10-year agreement, which took place from 2004 to 2014, so it's been six years.
It's another mess that this court inherited.
Yes.
That had been around for five years or so, and nothing being done on it. We're going to do something. I'm not sure what the court's going to do. We are looking at other avenues. We have contacted the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and asked them to start an investigation because there have been some allegations made that are somewhat troubling, and I don't want to disclose here. And I've asked you to prepare a letter to send to General Cameron, your Kentucky's Attorney General, and hopefully, we can get that out next week and ask them to look into the consumer protection issues. But I appreciate your hard work on this issue, and it's a mess, and the people out here deserve better service than this company's providing.
Absolutely, I believe that.
So, Vince, appreciate it. Thank you very much. I made a mistake a minute ago. My motion was to approve termination of Austin Blankenship, but Mr. Blankenship back here sent me a text that he was just, he was sorry to hear that he had been terminated. The motion, let me clarify my motion, was approval to terminate Austin Hatfield, effective 2/19/20. I don't want to make a member of the press mad at me, so we've got a motion. Is there a second? I made the motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Robertson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll, just to clarify this.
Don't get me in trouble over there. They're trying to get me in trouble, Austin. I'm not in trouble.
What's the real name?
I was giving my check out.
It is the county government. You might be waiting for a while.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, I apologize for that mistake. Getting too big of a hurry. All right, Mr. Keane, do you have anything, sir?
I don't, but we do have a matter we've been negotiating regarding the golf course, and Ginny, we will need to put that on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can discuss that. That's all, just.
Also, we will have, hopefully, an update on the RCC Big Shoal matter at the next meeting.
We have some documents that need to be filed this week, so hopefully, we'll have an update next week.
And another issue that you'll be able to update us on, that Commissioner Robertson and Commissioner Tackett, Commissioner Booth are pretty excited about, that we, some good news.
We should...
Positive news.
I like good news, too.
Positive, good, it's all the same. All right. Judge Hickman?
Nothing today, Judge.
Commissioner Robertson?
Judge, I need to make a motion that you'll try to find me a little money to go to the...
Judge, I need to make a motion, uh, that, uh, you'll try to find me a little money to go to the J.M. Wood Auction in Birmingham, Alabama.
Well, as, just so the folks out there here might be listening to this, we have major, one of the issues that's come up before we address that motion is, we are spending, we have spent four hundred and seventy thousand as of
Last week.
Last week, Commissioner Tackett was looking into this. We spent four hundred and seventy thousand on parts, uh, in fluids, tires for the road lot, county solid waste, and we're spending, we're throwing good money after bad, and we think we're going to have a substantial savings when we get the four new garbage trucks that we purchased in. We really don't know what that number will be. I think all of us, the four of us, have differing views on that. But we're also spending a lot of money on our road equipment, and we know that before warm weather, we have to have a new paving machine. We saved a lot of money. Mr. Little says two. We saved enough money last year. We probably saved, what, Fabian, one hundred and fifty thousand by doing paving ourselves last year? So, we, we probably, how much? We, by doing it in-house, we save money, so we need, we need at least two pavers. We need a jetter to clean some of the drains out to prevent damage. And we need, what were the, what are the main things that we need right now for our road lots, Fabian? Fabian, just so the public's listening to this, tell them about what your models, come up to the plot table, tell us what your model, uh, dump trucks that the road lot's using right now.
They're all, you know, they're, they're different, they're all different models, because no one, they all purchased at different times, but we were, we still have a few ninety-nines out there, the International Ninety-Nine Six-Wheel Dump Trucks that are still on, being used today.
In which the cabs are sitting on the fuel tanks.
Exactly, because the, the mounts have rusted out and the cabs sit down onto the frame, as Ron, as Commissioner Robertson has said.
I mean, let's just face it, when you're out here on, you know, salted roads, doing that kind of work, stuff wears out in twenty years. I don't care how well you maintain it. And again, we're throwing good money after bad, so, uh, I think this is something the public, I don't want the public to think that we're out here just throwing money, but we have saved money, we have made a substantial number of budget reductions. And I think it's important to know, and I'm going to jump ahead on this issue, we put the dollars, a dollar amount last week to what the jail labor program is saving the taxpayers of this county. If we had to replace the inmate labor, it would be about one point four nine four million, I believe was the number. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? If we hired employees to do the work that we're doing with inmate labor, it would be almost a million and a half dollars a year, and that's money we don't have. We're doing everything we can on the purchasing side to save money. We're doing everything we can to save money on the power bills, the water bills. We're looking at what we can do and what surplus property we can get rid of. But we believe that we can save a substantial amount of money in the maintenance garage, and let me say this, the maintenance garage was a great concept, and that concept, I believe, was, that was started by Judge Karen Gibson. Uh, I think that's who started the maintenance garage, and she was dead on, she did, that was a great service to the county when they started that. Uh, when they hired, when they start, hired their own mechanics, we've saved a lot of money doing the work in-house. The problem is, we've got so much work to do. I just got a list in, and I, I'll get copies of this made. Uh, can we get copies of this real quick for the commissioners? Phaedra, can you go make me, or somebody can go make me some copies of this real quick? The commissioners don't have that. This was faxed over today. We've got a mini packer down with a bolt on the eject, ejector hole downs. We've got two thirty-two yard packers down, three thirty-two yard packers down, I'm sorry. We've got a backhoe, two six-wheel dump trucks, and a paver all in to have work done. It's actually, the maintenance garage's done a pretty good job getting caught up since the last meeting. But as you can see, the biggest expenditure we've got is on the, uh, solid waste side, but there's also a substantial amount of work that's going to have to be done to our county road equipment. Fabian, I think it's fair to say if we had a big snow right now, we may not be able to take care of the roads because of
Oh, you're, you're right.
of the trucks that are down.
Judge, one month ago, we had one truck on, uh, Robson Creek Lot, that's our single cab truck working, they was driving dump trucks to
So, i- the public needs to understand, we're going to have to make an investment into quality equipment to, A, save money, but B, to provide basic services.
Yeah, and Judge, I would just like to add that the last time that we went, I feel, I honestly feel that we, we done very well with the two pieces that we did purchase. They've proven out to be, uh, good machines.
Well, um, what I would recommend we do, and I think Judge Hickman's going to be going down to the auction, too, um, I, I'm not sure, this is an important decision, and there is a motion on the floor. Is there a dollar amount that you would like to have authorization for, um, for us to look at equipment?
Hey, Judge, can we address this, uh, authorization for a check under additional treasures business, where it's a special court meeting?
I don't think we can.
We, I mean, it's not listed on the agenda to make this motion, so we can do it under my business.
You can do it under his business, so we probably need, let's get, let's go back to the order of business, treasures, uh, business.
Under additional treasures business to authorize a check up to whatever said amount that you're talking about to go to, and to cover all expenses for the J.M. Wood Auction.
Well, I, I know, I would like to have three hundred thousand, but I, you know, I don't know if we, we've got that to spend, but I mean, we went last year with two hundred thousand, and we brought back how much? It was right around seventy-seven thousand, what we spent.
Yeah, seventy-eight thousand, I think, somewhere in that.
Seventy-eight.
Well, I mean, I, I want to be, I want people, and I want the media to understand, just because we authorize this, doesn't mean that's how much we're spending, but if we go down there and we find a great deal on equipment that we need, it beats buying new. On the flip side, on the flip side of this, I'm going to say this. I would almost rather buy or lease newer equipment that's going to have some kind of warranty with it, than, that's just me personally, than buying stuff that's out from under warranty, because it's imperative that we cut down on the maintenance cost, or this, this whole system at the maintenance garage could, could, we could be buried under the weight of
Well, that, that's why I say the maintenance garage gets a bad rap sometimes. I mean, it's not their fault that they can't fix all this quick enough, and, I mean, they're concerned, they're overloaded with
They had twenty-four vehicles in, at the court meeting before last, two court meetings ago, and eighteen of the court meetings, so they have made substantial progress. But, you know, we're asking them to work and keep stuff on the road that we just can't afford to keep on the road.
That's true.
So, I mean, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Robertson, is that correct? We have a motion to authorize the members of the court, whoever that may be, that attend the auction, uh, to purchase equipment, uh, up to an amount of, say,
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Not to exceed
Not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Plus, plus to cover all transportation, lodging expenses for anyone to go, so that way, I can reserve the rooms.
So, plus, uh, authorization to cover any travel and related expenses for the members, as well as, uh, shipping costs.
Sh, yeah. As well as shipping costs, I think.
As well as shipping costs for the equipment. So, we have a motion, is that correct, Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Tackett. Uh, any question or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, and I'm going to explain my vote. Um, I would, I would, and, and this is a trip that I may very well make. I just think that before we make any additional equipment purchases, that before you go, that you have an idea, you've got the catalog for the equipment. I think it would be important to know before you go, what kind of, identify the stuff that you think you're interested in bidding on. This is for Judge Hickman to do. You've got all next week to work on this, to figure out, before you go, what the cost, or at least for new equipment, would be for those same items. So, that way, and to do some online research, Greg, when the, so let's figure by Monday, for the court and Fabian and Chuck to have a list of what we might need down there. But, but here's what I'm saying. You need to do your priority list. What that you think is the auction going to have that you're interested in, that we need. Before you go, do some online research, Greg. Get Greg the list Monday or Tuesday at the latest, of what you're thinking about looking at. Let's compare, before we go, it'll give you three or four days before you go down there, to figure out what the, the purchase or lease of new would be. So, that way, when you go down there, and let's do some online research to see what similar pieces of equipment are going for. So, that way, we know if we go down there, we have an idea about what a reasonable price range will be. Does that make any sense, Greg? Okay. That's what I'm saying. So, that way, when you go down there, if they bring up an excavator and there's, it's going for whatever, you know about what the range will be that you could get it for, and you can see how much less than new you're getting it. But, you know, again, if it's something that's close, I think we need to look at a lease program or, um, or, you know, Frankie, you've talked about this a little bit. I mean, I don't like lease payments. I don't like them, you know. I'd rather own something. But on the flip side of it, if you can defer some of that maintenance cost to somebody else, instead of taking it on, because if you buy something that's out from under warranty, in reality, you don't know what you're getting until you start using it and you get it back. Is that, is that a fair statement? I mean, you don't
Judge, we've got a situation that week. We've got a court meeting on the seventeenth.
We can do the, are, so, you could do it
It starts on the seventeenth.
Starts on the seventeenth? It's a morning meeting, so we'll have to do it the morning. Is the auction on the morning?
Well, just some of the things we want to look at is going to be on that first day, so if we've got court, we're just, we'll not be able to do that.
So, let's do this. Let's have a special meeting on Monday, the sixteenth, and see if we can get everybody to come on that Monday instead of the, I mean, it's just something we need to do.
Yeah, move it up to Thursday.
But we need to put, uh, Jeannie, I'll get with you about, we need to put on there, if it's a special meeting, legal action, authorization to proceed on legal action.
Judge, we can move it up to the Thursday or Friday.
What's that?
Move it up to Thursday or Friday.
Let's just do it the prior Friday, if, if we can, Jeannie. But we got to have time, so Greg, get our stuff done before we go down there to see if we can
Right.
I mean, I, I just think before we go to an auction, that we need to have
See about what you're going to spend on a piece of equipment.
We need to know what a fair market value for that piece of equipment is, so that way, we got an idea if it's a good deal or a bad deal.
I think, uh, on some of these single axle trucks, I don't think we can get a lease on a single axle truck, can we?
Greg? Commissioner Robertson's got a question.
On a single axle truck, you know, like a thirty-three thousand G V W, you know, six-wheel truck, we can't get a lease on those, can we?
Well, I think
Like the CAKO lease.
Yeah, I think the CAKO lease deal, part, part of the issue there was, is those trucks don't resell well, uh, like the tens we're going to do. You can, you can lease them, you just can't get them on that lease buyback program that we have with
We can't trade them out every year.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably lose on that.
You can get them, but they said they don't sell well on resale.
Well, well, I noticed of all the auctions they've had down there in the last year or so, this is the first year that they've had some single axle trucks down there.
So, did you all get this, a copy of this for, okay, I just want everybody to have that. So, anyway, um, Commissioner Robertson, do you have anything else, sir?
That's it.
Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth? Uh, just to close out, Commissioner Robertson and I had an opportunity, you know, we've had a lot of good news, it's not so good, that we've had to deal with, you know. We've had a lot of hurdles to overcome in the last year, but today, we had an opportunity to go down to BitSource and meet with Lynn Parrish and Rusty Justice and look at their operation. It really is remarkable what they've done there, and it just shows that our workforce has tremendous potential to adapt and overcome the changes, the, the downturn in the coal economy. People who have moved from mining jobs into coding, uh, website design, uh, app development, virtual reality, augmented reality, computer modeling, artificial intelligence that they're working on down there, and there's a, really a lot of talented people here in, in this community. I mean, uh, you know, Peyton May that, uh, you know, is, is working down there. I mean, it's amazing what they're doing. Um, there's just a lot of people from this area that have tremendous potential, and it's interesting to see how BitSource is creating a company here, and one of the things we learned is that they're doing work for companies in Western Kentucky, they're doing work for companies in New York. Uh, they're partnering, uh, they're a Google affiliated company, and, you know, when you start seeing that type of, of business, uh, spring up here, it shows that we can do a lot of different things, you know, just because coal, um, is in a severe downturn, doesn't mean that all hope is lost. But we've got to be very conservative financially, but we've got to work with our local entrepreneurs to help grow new concepts, develop new businesses. And one of the things, I think, if, if people go back to the name that this court chose for the Pike County, uh, tech, uh, industrial, uh, development and technology corridor, we want to focus on high-tech jobs, because it clearly shows that, that people here, I think that Lynn Parrish put it this way, or maybe it was Rusty Justice, that, um, you know, coal miners are ju, are people who do high-tech work, they just get dirty doing it, something along those lines. But there's a lot of potential here in this community, and we just can't give up on it. A lot of the news isn't positive. We've got a lot of positive things today. We had the core here, we're going to clean up Fishtrap again. We've got progress that we're making on our landfill, getting it re-permitted. That's going to address the solid waste needs for this community long after we're all gone. We've got positive things that we're making, changes in our solid waste system, uh, to where we're improving efficiency. We're doing it in the road department. We're trying to make things flow smoother, making sure we're addressing complaints as timely as possible. And we're also moving forward on the Wolf Pit side. Uh, hopefully, the timeline is, we should have that done by the summer of twenty twenty-one, if everything falls in place. Uh, I am putting pressure on Ms. Hall to get the grants done as soon as we can. There's a lot of challenges that we're going to have to face, before we get to where, uh, we can start seeing the daylight. But I can tell you this, it's going to be a lot of hard decisions. A lot of the decisions this court's going to have to make may not be popular. But, you know, Steve Jobs, a friend of mine, actually, it was my wife sent to me a picture of Steve Jobs, uh, and it's, you know, it said something like, "If you want to make people happy, sell ice cream, but leadership means hard results," and that was something, I guess, was attributed to Steve Jobs. And when somebody, you know, recognizes that, these decisions, these leadership positions we're in are not always, uh, decisions that we want to make, or, you know, we look forward to making, and I think all of us have had some sleepless nights as we've been looking at these coal mineral service tax numbers. But there is a brighter day ahead for Pike County, Kentucky, and Eastern Kentucky, if we can work together. I think it's very positive. We've got one of our city commissioners here. Bob's, in his, uh, his day job, has been working with us on another project, and, uh, it's a very positive, and we're starting to see more cooperation with city government. Had a very positive meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mayor Carter and City Manager Philip Elswick. We're going to continue to work together with our state, federal partners, our local partners, and I think there's a lot of things that we can do to help move our community and our county forward. So, that's all I have, and with that being said, I'd like to, I did skip over, any other department supervisors or managers have anything? Chuck, Larry, Jimmy, Paul, William, Fabian, all right, forgot you all a minute ago. With that being said, William, I'd like to, for you to say the benediction for us, and then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Father, we come to you, Lord, and we ask you to bless him upon the decisions made here today, Lord, and we, we ask you to bless this county, Lord, and, and help it to move forward, um, in endeavors to create jobs and, and for the betterment of this county. We ask all these things in the sweet name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We are adjourned. See you soon. Thank you.